Good evening, this is the Guilford Board of Education. It is Monday, November 10th. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is a very exciting evening for us on the Board of Education. We have just had a municipal election and we are welcoming four of our members back and welcoming a new member to the board. We are so very lucky to have Bill Boss joining us tonight. Bill served on this body for 20 years, was the Chair for 14, and as an attorney is coming back to administer the oath of office to the five members of the board that have recently been elected. So I'm going to invite Mr. Boss to come forward and thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
My pleasure, of course. I can think of no greater honor than to be able to administer the oath to the four returning members and the one new member. Congratulations to all of you. So I guess we can do this in alphabetical order. If -- Jennifer Baldwin will please come up. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the Office of Member of the Guilford Board of Education, to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ralph Brooks, please. Please raise your right hand. You do solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of Office of Member of the Guilford Board of Education, to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And Amy Fanlosa, please.
Good evening, and please raise your right hand. You do solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the Office of Member of the Guilford Board of Education, to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Jennifer Scoggins.
Our new member? Congratulations. Please raise your right hand. You do solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the Office of Member of the Guilford Board of Education, to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Arnold Skretta.
Mr. Skretta, please raise your right hand. You do solemnly swear or affirm, as the case may be, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the Office of Member of the Guilford Board of Education, to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
So now as just a citizen, if I can just offer my thanks to the five people, the four people that decided to seek an additional term, the one newcomer, you will find it as rewarding as you expect it to be. It is a terrific position and the town is grateful for all nine of you and obviously also the administrators and the staff with everything you've done to make the Guilford schools what they are. So thank you all for all of your work.
Thank you so much. The next thing we are going to do is elect officers for the Board of Education, the Office of Chair, the Office of Vice Chair, and the Office of Secretary. This is a vote that we do by ballot, as I think most of you are well aware, almost all of our votes are voice or hand raises. This is an approach of doing so by ballot. So for each office, I'm going to facilitate this process. I am going to hand out for each one ballots, one, two, three, four, five, to each of my colleagues, and give the following instructions. As we go through each position, once there is a nomination, a second, and the closing of any additional nominations, we will be asked to write the name of the person at the top, who you will be voting for, and then we ask you to sign and then print your name. You're going to fold the ballot, we're going to hand them down to Dr. Freeman, who will then tabulate for each position. So anybody have any questions? All right. So the first office for election is the Office of Chair. Is there a nomination for the Office of Chair?
I nominate Dr. Kathleen Balistraci for Chair. Second. It is my distinct honor to nominate Dr. Kathleen Balistraci to Chair of the Guilford Board of Education. Katie has served on the Board of Ed for 14 years, six of those years as its Chair. So while this is not a new role for her, she is aptly fit and qualified. Dr. Balistraci is incredibly serious about her role as Chair. She spends innumerable hours coordinating with the Board and liaising with Dr. Freeman to ensure that not only our meetings, but our school system as a whole, function almost seamlessly and with the utmost level of professionalism and collegiality. A task, I assure you, which is not easy. Some in the community might not know that Dr. Balistraci is a research scientist, a Director and Faculty at Yale University School of Medicine. However, she is also, and perhaps more importantly, a mom and wife. With all these pots in the fire, it's amazing to think about the level of dedication that Dr. Balistraci has for the Board. Katie is incredibly focused and detail-oriented with both depth and breadth of knowledge of all things related to the schools, the Board, and our town. Katie always has the incising questions and illuminating comments that put not only Dr. Freeman, but the rest of the Board on notice that we should all be doing our homework. No doubt that Katie makes significant personal sacrifices and is parable with her time as she holds this position. Katie is very caring and invested in our schools, always keeping an open eye and a listening ear for the administrators, the Board, our schools, and yes, the town as a whole. For all those reasons, again, it is my honor to nominate you as Chair.
I'm floored and moved and humbled. Thank you. So there's a nomination and a second.
I will reiterate my second, yes.
Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, please take your piece of paper and fill it out as instructed. To test to see if we really know how to spell the name.
I'll count them phonetically.
Yeah. Just write it really messy.
and again, I want to add my thanks to everyone else. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm really humbled by what Arnold said, and the only thing I want to mention, it is truly my honor to serve on the Board of Ed. It has been my great privilege to represent the community, but also in this role, represent Guilford Public Schools, and so feel really blessed with the colleagues I've worked with over the years and currently. So thank you. I am now going to facilitate the process of electing a Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I nominate Kristin Peck. Kristin and I were first elected to the Board together six years ago, to this day. Despite our differences in political affiliation, we have consistently worked collaboratively in service of Guilford's families and students.
Congratulations and thank you.
Over that time, I have seen firsthand her dedication, integrity, and steady judgment
Thanks, everyone. All right, and then last, we will be voting for someone to be the Secretary for the Board
on difficult issues. I also firmly believe that a bipartisan executive committee best serves this Board and our Committee, and for that, in many reasons, I am happy to nominate Kristin Peck.
Thank you.
Second.
And there is a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? of Education, and I have the opportunity to nominate Dick Hirsch for this position. All right, hearing none, I'm going to ask everyone to fill this out. Dick has been on the Board for six and a half years. He comes to the Board with a broad range of expertise, deep expertise, in a number of areas, the most significant being that he gained over a career in education, including as a college president. He has knowledge and insight into any discussion of educational policy issues that we've had and has really provided significant value to those discussions. While on the Board, Dick has chaired the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee and guided meaningful discussions on a range of educational issues. Dick is committed to excellence in education, he's committed to the work of this Board, and he's committed to serving the Guilford community in this role. He's really so invested in education and really drives some really important conversations for us, even about how we can engage our community in discussing educational issues, not just our Guilford Public Schools community, but our community at large. So I'd like to make a motion to elect Dick Hirsch to the role of Secretary of the Board of Education. Second. One second. Are there any other nominations? All right, I ask that we all vote, please.
Congratulations and thank you.
All right. Before we go on to the next agenda item, which is action on minutes, Kristin and I were just talking before the meeting. We have public comment number six, which is public comment on the topics of the agenda, and the guidance is limited to three minutes per comment, total of 30 minutes. I would like to make a motion to consider extending that to 45 minutes. We know there are a number of the public here, it may give them an opportunity to speak before we have discussion on the items. You are also always welcome to speak at the end of the meeting on topics not on the agenda. But I would like to ask if there is a motion to extend, if we need it, the public comment at Item 6 to 45 minutes. So moved.
Second.
Any question or term? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you. So, Item Number 5 is action on the minutes, October 14th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the October 14th, 2025 meeting minutes? Second. Any comments or corrections on these minutes?
This was on the 14th?
Yes, October 14th.
Item 2, page 2, I think there's a typo in the correction.
Was it a Tuesday meeting? Not a Monday? There was a Tuesday.
Correct. It was Tuesday, October 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I had one correction. I consulted with Dr. Freeman for him because this was his speaking. At the bottom of Page 6, the first sentence is a little bit confusing, so there is the suggestion to leave at the very beginning, Dr. Freeman noted that, to take out some enforcement through the end of the sentence and just go right into one option. Just some of the words in there don't make sense and we couldn't figure out what was meant. Does anybody have concern about that approach to the minutes? All right, I'm hearing none. Are there any other corrections or comments? All right. So we have a motion and a second, asking for then a vote on approval of the Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, Guilford Board of Education meeting minutes as amended. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Okay.
One abstention here.
Okay, so three abstentions. Ms. Baldwin, Ms. Fanlosa, Ms. Scoggins, all abstained. All right. Next is the meeting minutes for the Guilford Board of Education workshop meeting on Monday, October 27th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Any comments or corrections on this? I will note that the beginning suggests that there are Committee members and other Board members, but this was a full Board meeting.
Great.
So we just probably just need Board of Ed members present and then all the names to follow.
Got it.
Yeah, because it was just a workshop meeting.
It was a workshop night committee.
It looks like a policy committee, it looks like.
Any other?
Page 2.
Yep.
Mr. Jarvis spoke about GIPPER and Huddle. The correct name is GIPPER. G-I-T-P-E-R.
Okay.
There's two corrections there.
Yep.
As in Ronald Reagan?
Correct.
Any other corrections? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions?
I don't understand.
Ms. Scoggins is abstaining, understandably, because she wasn't here. All right. We are up to public comments for topics on the agenda. Anyone who would like to address the Board is invited to come up to the podium. Yeah, I can get that a second. We ask you to stay within three minutes, please, for your comments, so that everyone has a chance to speak. We ask that you give your name and address when you get to the podium, unless you are a student in the school system or someone younger than 18, and then you can give your name and the school you attend, but you do not need to give your address. We do not, don't want students or young people giving addresses. And again, we just ask that this be on a topic on the agenda. There is a public comment at the end of the meeting for topics not on the agenda, so this should be related to the agenda, and again, please, within three minutes. So we invite anyone who'd like to come to the podium to come on up and do so.
Good evening. Shelley Farhadian, 15 Sunset Creek Road. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to thank the Board again for the opportunity to speak about the proposed cell phone policy, which I believe is on the agenda for tonight. I want to thank you for your bravery in attacking and handling what's obviously a very controversial and difficult issue to find consensus on. I really, I've learned a lot personally from watching how you guys have handled this, and so thank you for that. I've spoken here previously and have focused more on why I felt that, often a way, was really insufficient to deal with the distractions that come even from having a phone in a backpack out of sight. I was here last time and talked about some of the issues with allowing students to wear smartphone devices on their wrists, but tonight I want to focus on a totally different topic, something that I know is really dear to all of us, which is school safety. I want to share with the Board tonight something really important that came out last week, which is a statement from the National Association of School Resource Officers. So this is an organization of school-based law enforcement officers, school administrators, and school security and safety professionals. I'm sure many of you are aware of the organization, the NASRO, and it was founded in 1991. This is really the preeminent organization of school safety officers. And they came out last week and said that access to phones during the school day reduces student safety in normal and especially in emergency situations. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that, because I know one of the concerns that some of the parents in our community have, very understandably, is that if, God forbid, there was a school safety situation, they would want their kid to have a phone and they would want to be able to reach that. And as a parent, I totally understand that. But what the professionals are telling us is that students having access to their phones during the school day, even between classes, reduces their safety and the whole community's safety in those situations. That's why the NASRO strongly supports policies that ban cell phones bell-to-bell, that is the entire school day. Some of the reasons they bring up are that, for example, during an emergency such as a school shooting, students must be completely focused on life-saving instructions and information. Phones can easily distract them from hearing and understanding the appropriate things to be doing. Sometimes in school emergencies, sorry, this is very emotional to talk about, students need to hide in silence to avoid being the targets of violence. Sounds or lights from phones could actually impede that. School administrators and first responders have noted that having hundreds of students accessing their phones at the same time degrades network performance and makes it more difficult for security personnel to contact them. Happy to submit this to the Board for further review and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brittany Stalzberg, 170 Chestnut Grove. I am the mother of three children in Guilford Public Schools. I'm thrilled to see the BOE considering a bell-to-bell cell phone policy, and both myself and my husband support the policy as written. I really commend the Board and the administration for paying attention to the research, which clearly shows immense benefits to removing cell phone use at school. This policy really makes me feel reassured as a parent that our community values not only the academic performance of our students, but also their social and emotional well-being. Thank you for your service, and I urge you to pass the policy as is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Francis. I live at 721 Little Meadow Road. I have two children in the school system. I am a firefighter in a shoreline town by trade here in Connecticut. I'm going to speak specifically from that point of view. I've responded to a number of emergencies at schools and do yearly joint training with my town's police department. I've been in numerous dangerous hazardous and chaotic situations on the job. They can be intense, overwhelming to the untrained person. We often refer to these as organized chaos. Cell phones in schools during an emergency are a serious hazard. When alarms sound, students instinctively grab their phones, call or text parents or loved ones. This floods the 911 system, delays critical information for dispatchers, and creates mass panic among, and rumors spread faster than facts, as parents race to the scene, making an already dynamic scene more chaotic. We've seen kids frozen in hallways, filming instead of evacuating, or running back into smoke-filled buildings to retrieve a phone. In an active shooter or fire scenario, ringing or vibrating phones can drown out our commands over the PA. One device per student turns an orderly evacuation into chaos, costing vital minutes when every second determines who gets out. For safety, phones should stay locked away until the all-clear is called. I have personally seen our town's first responders respond to what they were told was a burglar alarm at a school. It was rapid, professional, and commanding, as it should be. In my opinion, the negatives end up having cell phones in schools surpass, far surpasses the positives. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Caitlin Loomis. I'm at 57 Cindy Lane. I just wanted to thank you all for your careful consideration of this critically important issue. I know that this issue in particular carries with it a lot of emotion from everyone involved, and I think in these cases, it's just really important to ground ourselves in the data and the research. I was on the T Committee last year and was on the Research Subcommittee, so so can too many of you before. I really commend the board and the administration for paying attention to the research, which clearly shows immense benefits to removing cellphone use at school. This policy really makes me feel reassured as a parent that our community values not only the academic performance of our students, but also their social and emotional well-being. Thank you for your service, and I urge you to pass the policy as is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Francis. I live at 721 Little Meadow Road. I have two children in the school system. I am a firefighter in a shoreline town by trade here in Connecticut. I'm going to speak specifically from that point of view. I've responded to a number of emergencies at schools and do yearly joint training with my town's police department. I've been in numerous dangerous, hazardous, and chaotic situations on the job. They can be intense, overwhelming to the untrained person. We often refer to these as organized chaos. Cellphones in schools during an emergency are a serious hazard. When alarms sound, students instinctively grab their phones, call or text parents or loved ones. This floods the 911 system, delays critical information for dispatchers, and creates mass panic among, and rumors spread faster than facts, as parents race to the scene, making an already dynamic scene more chaotic. We've seen kids frozen in hallways, filming instead of evacuating, or running back into smoke-filled buildings to retrieve a phone. In an active shooter or fire scenario, ringing or vibrating phones can drown out our commands over the PA. One device per student turns an orderly evacuation into chaos, costing vital minutes when every second determines who gets out. For safety, phones should stay locked away until the all-clear is called. I have personally seen our town's first responders respond to what they were told was a burglar alarm at a school. It was rapid, professional, and commanding, as it should be. In my opinion, the negatives end up having cellphones in schools surpass, far surpasses the positives. Thank you for this consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Caitlin Loomis. I'm at 57 Cindy Lane. I just wanted to thank you all for your careful consideration of this critically important issue. I know that this issue in particular carries with it a lot of emotion from everyone involved, and I think in these cases, it's just really important to ground ourselves in the data and the research. I was on the T Committee last year and was on the research subcommittee, so so can too many of you before. I spent a lot of time in the weeds of the academic articles and research studies surrounding this topic. I really appreciated the policy and especially sending it out ahead of time, and wanted to just highlight a few things. I was going to highlight school safety, which I think was really eloquently described by a couple of other people, so I won't go into that, but wholeheartedly agree that schools are safer without access to cellphones. There's abundant research that cellphones and smartwatches are detrimental to our children's learning, attention, memory, and academic success. By allowing cellphones and smartwatches in the classroom, we're directly and negatively impacting our children's education, and that data is clear and unequivocal. I do want to highlight that it's critical that phones and smartwatches are off-in-a-way throughout the entire way as proposed, entire day, I'm sorry, as proposed, including non-academic time. We, our committee focused more on the academic research, but you know, I have certainly delved into the research surrounding the non-academic time, and we know that bullying rates decrease with bell-to-bell policies. Children learn to socialize, work together more effectively. They move more during recess, and mental health improves significantly. One recommendation to the policy that I have is that phones and smartwatches are collected, and this could be in something as simple as a homeware, Tupperware, home room, Tupperware bin. It doesn't have to be anything expensive or, you know, super fancy. Our children's brains, and especially those in adolescence, are still developing. Executive function and impulse control are some of the last things to develop, and that continues well into our 20s. I think it's asking far too much of children to have their phone in their presence somewhere, but have it off and not turn it on or not look at it. I think it's asking far too much for our staff and teachers and administrators to have to police that. So, you know, my recommendation would be that phones should be collected with a zero-tolerance policy for anyone who does not abide, which would minimize, I think, the burden on everyone involved. And one other comment I had was, and this is a little bit into the weeds again, but there was a note that smartwatches should be unpaired from phones. My oldest is at Baldwin, and you know, a lot of students, I don't know the percentages, have watches without phones, which is something that, you know, we can do now. And so you can't unpair it. So I think that that's why I mentioned collecting cellphones and smartwatches, because these things can't be simply turned off or unpaired, like the phone that does have a watch associated with it. But again, thank you for your thoughtful consideration. I'm really excited for this policy and all of your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
Joe Petrowski, Valley Shore Drive. I got a little different opinion about what these people have said. Shortly after 9/11, there was Homeland Security sent out an invitation to several people involved in agriculture. And the reason why they sent them out to the people involved in agriculture was we were, we're the only ones that are working in the community and live here. 9/11 occurred, and within two minutes of that second plane hitting the building, I was up to Lakes. I had a son in Lakes. Lakes knew what was going on before Central Office did. I don't know why I went up there, but within 10 minutes, the entire media center was full of parents. The reason why they wanted people out in the community is to act as unofficial first responders. If we're in a situation that we have to get first responders, we have to have real-time communication, so these people know what they're going to get into. Sometimes it may not be a fire, a fireman that has to come in, it may be a police officer first. If it's a chemical situation, these people will have to know something about the chemicals so they know what they're going to walk into. So with that being said, I don't know how this could work out. I don't want the kids to go crazy with the cellphones in the classroom, but you have to have a real-time communication with the incoming responders, okay? And it's very important. We've got to protect them also, like I say, so they know what they're walking into, all right? And that's, that's just a comment. My kids are out of the system, but that's just something that, you know, after hearing these people speak, I didn't come here to speak on that, but that's just my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bernadette Bober. I'm at 252 Valley Shore Drive, and just very quickly, I want to publicly thank you all for tackling such a hard issue and say that I'm in full favor of this cellphone ban, so it is going to be a very difficult road, I'm sure, ahead for all of you, but thank you so much for tackling this. I've been in education for over 20 years, and I have two teenagers in the system, so thank you for them. They don't realize that you're helping them yet, but you are, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Diana Karliantchik, 26 Overlook Lane. I'm a physician, I'm a psychiatrist, and over the years, I've seen such an impact on mental health and cyberbullying. You know, the reality of cellphones is that everything's filtered, everything's not real, and really, having the phones around really huge, make a huge impact on how people see each other. It's not a reality over there, and I think that many students really can't escape a judgment. And if school's kind of the safe place where they can't be cyberbullied, where they can't have all this DMs and all that, then it's the one safe space they have. I know that phones are really integral to socialization and whatnot, but, you know, as a physician in mental health for over a decade, you see, you see the impact, and all the data supports that, so thank you so much for all your work, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board on a topic on the agenda? Going once? All right. Well, certainly, thank you to those of you who participated. Public comment and public input is so crucial to helping us as we make challenging decisions on behalf of the students in the school. Yes?
Can we ask our students to make comments on this?
If they would like to, sure. Are there things, would you like to participate in public comment at this time? No pressure? Or you can wait until the student, which I think is...
Student report is coming up.
Student report, if you want to take a few minutes and pause.
Or, as I had kind of said to all three of them, if they had thoughts and they wanted to email us separately, they could always do that.
They could do that as well.
That is another, so you're welcome to, as we, excuse me, I apologize. We met earlier this year, and I reminded all of our student reps that they are, in fact, non-voting members of this board, and reminded them that they're always welcome to comment on any topic. You are welcome to do that tonight, and you're also welcome to have your comments shared with the board through email. You could reach out to all the board members, or through Ms. Chaff, or through me as well. So I want you to know there's lots of ways for you to be able to have that opinion shared here tonight, or if not tonight, soon.
Or really, any student.
Yeah.
Any student is welcome to send their opinions to all the board members, but as, again, as non-voting members of the board, you are always welcome to speak at this table, just as everybody on this side of the table is a non-voting member of the board as well.
Yeah, there's definitely been, there's been a lot of talk about the cellphone policy. It's definitely been on everyone's minds. You'll hear usually kids in classes or in between passing periods are usually, you know, talking about how it's going to be taken away. Usually, what I've heard personally, most people, I think it's a little bit of fear. I think change is scary and different. I think if you had asked me a couple days ago what I thought about the cellphone policy, I would also be a little hesitant. You know, we've had phones our entire lives. They've just been around as long as we are. So I think it's definitely put a lot of, you know, it's a nervous thing to come into. I think what students, I've talked to a lot of kids, and a lot of them do agree that they should be taken away during class time. That seems to be a little bit more on the majority, that they do, we do realize that they are a distraction in class, they aren't really beneficial, and a respect thing, too, for the teachers with like kids on their phones while they're talking, that's something to consider as well. I think, for the most part, the consensus seems to be that in-between passing periods and taken away at lunch during study hall is what's more causing a lot of fear. So, trying to think. I know it's, it's a difficult thing to police, too, if you, I personally, like, maybe what my opinion would be on a policy would be to take it away during the class time, but have it for maybe a study hall or a lunch, kind of as an in-between phase as we're shifting tours, but I've also listened today and heard a lot of valuable points on why that also may not be beneficial. So I guess that was kind of a lot of everything. I think there's just so many pros and cons to both, that I think that whatever you decide, it's going to be challenging, but change is okay, and it's worth a try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I definitely think that taking it away, like, during the class period would be, like, pretty effective. I know in my English class right now, we, at the beginning of class, we go up to like the bin, and we all have like a assigned number to put in there, and at the end, you kind of leave and just take it. So there isn't really like much distraction in there. So instead of maybe taking it away for the entire day, I would suggest just like taking it away like period to period, because I think even during like study halls and like lunch, I think it's important that, you know, if, let's just say, there's someone eating lunch, and they don't have like a lot of friends to sit with, they don't have to just be like sitting there alone. They can kind of just like play a game on their phone, or, you know, just at least be like entertained, kind of, and don't just have to like sit there alone at a table. So I think that would probably be beneficial. Also, I don't know how well they'd be able to police having it like away during lunch or like during study hall. I don't know how, like during study hall, there's usually a bunch of kids like downstairs in the commons, which it's kind of hard to like keep an eye on every single kid at once, like constantly telling them, babe, put your phone away, or, I don't really know how. There we go.
I do know that, like, in my classes, the students respect putting their phones in the pocket of the teachers, like, in the beginning of class, just put over here, put it away, and everyone is really respectful to that and stands to that.
Yeah, adding on to that, I think in, only in my math class, it's the only class we have phones like actually taken away, where you have to shut our phone off completely and put it in like a little caddy. We definitely are a lot more productive in that class, but I think the only issue that will come from like a bell-to-bell cellphone policy is like kids getting around it. There's been lots of talk about like burner phones and like that kind of stuff to get around it, so kids will still have their phones in their backpacks. So I think maybe like having, like, an enforced policy that's like constant throughout all our classes is definitely necessary, but not like so strict that it's bell-to-bell, because I think that is definitely the major thing that students are like very against. I haven't heard any like negativity towards like just the classes and not like for study hall, which, like Zach said, most of the study hall for like sophomore through senior is in the commons. So students that are in the commons, there's only like two or three teachers that are sitting at one table, like in the middle. So if students have their phones in their backpacks, it's pretty easy to just sneak it around. There's also like the corners in the cafeteria and stuff. So I think that'll definitely like be harder to enforce, but I think that it should definitely be put in place.
Can I ask you guys a quick question about study hall? So if it's in the commons and kids are currently now like just allowed to use their phones, is it disruptive to other students? Like, are they listening to it loudly? Like, can you hear what's happening? Or is a kid just either doing work or on their phone and working relatively independently?
It's pretty independent. I think there's a lot of people that sit at their tables, like with their friends that share a study hall, but there's a good amount of people, which it's mostly just sophomores and juniors in the commons. Freshmen have like rooms that they're put in with a teacher, and the seniors have open campus, so they can leave school during that period. But for sophomores and juniors, they're either sitting with their friends, or they're sitting by themselves. Like, I find a lot of people are kind of productive during study hall, but when they don't have homework to do, they just stay on their phones, they use headphones. You don't really hear people like listening to like social media or anything like that or music out loud.
Yeah, I agree with Grace. Usually, when people are on their phone in study hall, it's turned all the way down, or it's very quiet. You almost like don't even, sometimes you don't even know, like, very, very quiet. It's more the kids who, not that they are on their phone, but sometimes when the only noise you hear from the commons is just people talking. So it's usually not, you don't really hear, everyone has their ringers off. No one's blaring music or anything.
It's also like really spread out. A lot of kids, it's like three to a table downstairs, or they can kind of come up to the library, or like see a teacher. Honestly, in my study hall, in the commons, there's probably like five or six other kids I can see, like in there. So like, everyone's kind of doing their own thing.
Thank you. Thank you. So that will be later on in the meeting, one of our agendas, we will be discussing the cellphone policy. Pivoting to number seven on the agenda is the review and approval of expenditures for the month of October 2025. I was the reviewer of the financial reports. Expenditures for the month of October 2025 were $5,913,653.74. Expenditures and encumbrances through the end of October were 28.81% of the budget as compared to 30.35% in the preceding year. We are reporting revenue for October 2025 in the amount of $135,380.36, which includes $698.86 for non-resident tuition, $64,527.50 for pre-K tuition, $70,000 for tuition from Madison, and $154 for Medicaid. Our salary, each of our salary categories are either lower than or in line with prior year expenditures proportionally, and we have a warrant being submitted in the amount In the Board of Ed Operations Committee meeting just prior to this meeting, we talked more extensively about this budget report and then about the specifics of the warrants. So I am going to ask for a motion to approve the October 2025 financial reports for fiscal year 2526.
Tom, hold on a second.
Any additional comments or questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, we've got everyone. Thank you. Number eight is to report out on communications. Perhaps not surprisingly, we have, the board has received quite a few communications around the cellphone policy, and they range from folks very in support of the bell-to-bell policy that is being considered at the moment. There were people who are against that policy, and there are people who are falling in the middle, I think is the, is the best way to put it. Are there other things anyone just wants to mention about those communications or other communications that have been received? Yeah, go ahead.
So I did hear personally from some friends in the community, parents, who essentially took the position that I think our student representatives here are taking, where they encouraged the board to take a more metered approach, where students could keep the phones at breaks, or breaks, study hall, et cetera. They were parents of, I'd say, upperclassmen or one foot out the door, if you will. But I also had the opportunity to speak with one, an education administrator from one of our neighboring towns, and they said that the bell-to-bell ban was life-altering for the climate of the school. And literally, that's what they said. And if anything, they encouraged us to go further to include personal devices, you know...
Personal computers or other, okay.
So, you know, obviously, there's going to be different takes on this, but I, you know, it was interesting to hear that from an administrator. And he said that the students' biggest problem, from his perspective, was music. Students want to hear their music.
Interesting. Other communications or...
I do, not related to cellphones.
Okay. Go ahead.
So Dr. Freeman and I received a letter from 27 Cox... So Dr. Freeman and I received a letter from 27 Cox families. I am the Board of Ed representative for A.W. Cox. And these 27 families are parents of the Cox first grade. That is a class that has 21 and a class that has 22 kids at Cox this year. And this letter is specifically asking for an additional teacher to be added for second grade next year, so that they would have three classes for second grade. And perhaps for this year, we add a para or come up with another idea for how we might be able to add an extra adult to those two classrooms. The letter was really mindful of budgets, acknowledging that they understand there's a cost associated with this. The letter was also extremely complimentary of the teachers, saying they are doing a heroic job managing 21 and 22 students, but articulating that they feel the kids are overwhelmed by the sheer number of six-year-olds in each room.
Okay. Any other communications? All right. And then just as a note to our community, all of our email addresses are on the Calhoun Public Schools website. So whether it's utilizing public comment in any of our meetings or reaching out by email, we do read every email that comes to us. All right, student reps, we're up to student rep reports.
For A.W. Cox, the kindergartners are exploring play-based learning and kind of starting a new unit on weather wonders. First graders are working on tools and work creating their own magnificent thing. I shouldn't really give that much more on it, but I assume it's...
But they were magnificent regardless. Okay.
Second graders completed their schools and communities unit with a trip to Eli Whitney Museum. And they're now studying paleontology. And they're welcoming Cox veterans for a ceremony tomorrow to celebrate Veterans Day, and they can kind of share their experiences. And then for Baldwin, November and December, they're kind of trying to focus on gratitude, kind of centered around Thanksgiving. The holiday food drive will be launched to support local families. And in preparation for Veterans Day, they're doing a wall of honor with personalized dog tags for the veterans that come in.
For Guilford Lakes, the third graders traveled to Mystic to participate in Stolen Sailors Program, where they learned about life in the colonial time period. They also participated in a virtual author visit by Scholastic Story Boys. The program Jeff Keeney Live celebrated the epic release of the 20th Diary of a Wimpy Kid book with international bestselling author Jeff Keeney. He read an excerpt of the new book, answered questions, and did a how-to draw. They also participated with Pete Oswald, where they read and drew along with Pete Oswald, the illustrator of the Food Group series. Guilford Lakes is also excited to share that through the collaboration of the PTO, dedicated parent volunteers, and the support of Superintendent Freeman and Principal Ryan, Guilford Lakes Elementary will be participating in the 2025 to 2026 Odyssey of the Mind program. This international creative problem-solving initiative will give our students a fun and challenging way to build confidence, teamwork, creativity, and critical thinking skills, helping them grow as initiative learners and leaders. A heartfelt thank you to everyone who helped bring this exciting new enrichment opportunity to Lakes. And then for Guilford High School, the school fall play of Midsummer Night's Dream is coming together beautifully. The cast and crew are still hard at work rehearsing and putting on the finishing touches, but the show is almost ready to take the stage. Girls' field hockey and girls' volleyball have reached the semifinals of states. Best of luck to those competing this week. And then quarter one of the school year has wrapped up, and students are definitely starting to look forward to Thanksgiving and fall break with our annual GHS Fall Pep Rally right around the corner. And then, as you can see in the room today, we had a Veterans Day celebration, where veterans from the community came in to speak and share their stories and their experiences. So from Guilford High School, thank you to all veterans for your service in our community and our community at large.
At Calvin Lee, the fourth graders visited the Florence Griswold Museum, where they learned about American Impressionism. And they got to learn how to paint. They did a paint class. This classic book fair is also happening next week through the 17th through the 21st. And the school is going to be walking to the green tomorrow for the Veterans Day celebration and participating in it. They also were encouraged to write letters to the veterans to share with them tomorrow. At Melissa Jones, they're going to also honor and celebrate the U.S. veterans at an assembly, where veterans of Melissa Jones students will join them as each grade sings, recites poetry, and shares what it means to be a hero. The entire school will also be wearing a name tag, sharing a veteran connected to their families. This month, the PTO is also hosting a food drive to support the Guilford Food Pantry, and it'll run until November 21st in hopes to raise money and food for Thanksgiving and towards Christmas.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great stuff going on in the school. You'll hear me say this every minute. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we also understand how busy you are. And so you're also welcome to exit the meeting at this point. And we, once again, thank you for your input.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Freeman, we're up to number 10, superintendent's report.
Yes, I have a very brief report tonight. I simply want to remind the board and the community. I want to start by thanking the community for the participation in the budget process this year. I think in the early stage of the budget build, we have had probably more and more consistent community involvement in this year's budget than we have before. At this point, we begin next week with meetings within the administrative team. We'll be meeting with the principal of every building, with the director of every department. We will absolutely be taking the feedback that we have heard. We will be looking at class sizes. We will be looking at staffing levels. We will be looking at the comments that we received, as well as the needs that the principals identify at the building level, in building that first initial administrative draft of the budget, which will then be presented in this room to you, the board, at your January meeting. In the interim, in addition to working internally with the leadership team, we do have a December meeting scheduled with the Board of Finance. I do want to note that that meeting is a very broad meeting, and there will not be specific details about our budget build shared. But we will be talking about the commentary we've heard from the community, the needs of the community as we see them, and the fiscal positioning of the community as we finalize that budget build. So more to come on the budget, and I hope that the community stays as engaged and involved as they have been to date. I was going to make a note about Veterans Day, but I think that the students took the lead on that. I just want to note that I think that being in school on Veterans Day is one of the significant changes that we have made to our school calendar, so that our students are able to talk about the importance of service, about the importance of veterans in our community and to our nation, and to participate in activities and spend time with Veterans Day on Veterans Day. So there have been lead-up activities. There will be more activities across the district tomorrow. And we really appreciate the principals and teachers who create those opportunities for our students to learn on Veterans Day, not simply to have a day off from school on Veterans Day. And finally, I just want to respond to a question that was asked last month. When I met last month, I presented the official October 1 enrollment numbers to all of you. I did not have the numbers for choice students available at that time, but I do have them tonight. So I do want to note that in our second year, participating in the Open Choice program, we have six students who are enrolled this year. One of those is a student returning from enrollment last year, and five of those are new students who have enrolled this year. Of those six students, there are two at Baldwin Middle School and four who are spread across our four elementary schools. This year, as we offer seats, remember, we looked at ramping this up. So this year, when we offer seats to the students in New Haven, we will be offering seats in first grade, in fifth grade, and for the first time, in ninth grade. We'll be offering entry at the freshman level next year. So we expect to see those numbers continue to grow as students stay with us, come back for second and third years, and have more opportunities to enroll at the beginning of elementary, the beginning of middle, and now the beginning of high school. I want to make sure that I remind the board and note for the community that the seats are offered on space available. The opportunities that we offer for students to join us and become Guilford students do not have a cost to the Guilford students. We offer it in grade levels and in class sections where we have room for those students to enroll. We do not offer it in classes that are already recognized as at the top of board recommendations for class size. And we will not offer more seats at the freshman year that we can house comfortably. It doesn't add cost to our Guilford budget to offer these opportunities to the students who join us. And then those students serve only to enrich our community and our classes when they add through joining us. That's it. That's the entirety of my report tonight.
Thanks. I was also interested in hearing about the tour last week.
Yeah, I apologize for not having that for you last month, but I didn't want to respond in email. I wanted to respond publicly with those numbers.
So, Dr. Freeman, those are first graders?
They are first and second graders.
Okay. And then those...
And they're going to stay at the same elementary school, just for continuity?
Yes. Actually, they're first, second graders, and fifth graders. So we offered seats this year at the first grade and the fifth grade. And we had one student who returned with us and continues. And yes, once those students enroll with us, they enroll at an elementary school, and they are then Guilford students. And they would progress through that elementary school into the middle schools and through the high school, should they choose to continue that enrollment.
Are there any neighboring districts that have taken on Open Choice?
I know there were conversations around some neighboring districts, but we are kind of the farthest at this point, correct?
At this point, we are the furthest out. Madison followed our lead to have the legislation changed in the same way that we did, so that Madison could begin offering seats. That change was part of a larger bill, and it did not get through. But they are bringing it back in the next session, and they're going to make sure that they keep an eye on it. We benefited from our legislator, who shepherded it through the process and ensured that ours passed. Ours was a standalone item. This one was bundled in with some other items and didn't pass. And then nobody thought to pull it out and move it separately. Sean Scanlon did us really good service as an elected representative at the time, ensuring that our change passed. So at this point, we are the furthest out along the shoreline. There are students from New Haven who go as far north as Cheshire, but we're the furthest out along the shoreline.
Other questions? Any questions on the budget mentioned earlier? All right, we all, you know, I think John, we walked through at our meeting a couple weeks ago, various dates that are coming up around meetings that we'll have with the Board of Finance, starting to talk budget somehow the beginning of January. We'll be here sooner than...
Before we realize.
Then we can imagine, and Neil Harris repeating this, I think, probably quite a bit, but a reminder that the last week of January, that Monday and Tuesday, we will be holding public, I think it's the last week, I should be careful.
I'm just looking for the dates now.
Yeah, thank you, John, for the dates. Public forum, public input on the budget. At that point, we'll have a budget with numbers for people to react to. We will make sure to get those numbers out as well. All right. We are up to the board agenda. 11.1 is to act on personnel items. We are being asked to ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Jacqueline Collins, Adams Middle School, special education teacher. Beth Milton for the district, an ELL teacher. And Maureen O'Day, Adams Middle School, a science teacher. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of these three teachers? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's everybody?
Thank you.
Wonderful. We are receiving, for consideration, receive item tonight, the 2026-27 school calendar drafts. We have two drafts in front of us. Draft number one has a school start date of September 3, which is actually prior to Labor Day next year, which is late. Labor Day is September 7. So draft number one calendar starts the Thursday before Labor Day and has an end date of June 7, which just seems so...
We've gotten so used to going after Labor Day.
And we don't have snow days anymore.
We might.
We might. And then draft number two starts, has a first day of school on September 8, which is the day after Labor Day for the 26-27 year, and then has a school end date of June 10. Otherwise, at least per my perusal, the calendars are exactly the same.
Maintains the same holidays that we have been revising over the last several years. Maintains the practice of regular early release days approximately once a month on Wednesdays to be able to provide extended time for professional development, and continues to be in alignment with the LEARN regional calendar, which means that we align specifically the winter break, the April break, and as many of those holidays as possible with neighboring districts. And this benefits, this benefits either our employees who live in neighboring districts or Guilford parents who may work in neighboring school systems, so that we have the same April vacation as most of the other school districts around us. It is, it can at times be an efficiency for shared bus services. We engage in shared bus services with a number of neighboring districts, and it's a convenience for family members, both those who live in town, but also those who work in town.
I will note, though most of our audience is no doubt well aware, school this year started before Labor Day for the first time in probably...
Ten years since the high school construction.
Oh, is it that long since the high school? So when my kids were in elementary, we always started before Labor Day. With the construction of the high school, I believe it was the summer we were, or the fall after we were moving in, gave ourselves a little more time for that. Stayed on that pattern, as you just noted, for a good nine or 10 years.
And you're reminding me, Dr. Bellistracee, it is becoming more important to look at the Labor Day start or non-start because of the changes that the CIAC has put in place for high school athletics, with the opportunity for schools to formally engage earlier in the summer than they have in the past. And with the health requirement, the health and safety requirement, that every team have at least 10 days of formal practice before their first competition. When other schools begin before Labor Day and we begin after, that swing of a week really becomes difficult for us to be able to schedule the games that the conference expects us to be able to schedule. And so, yeah, with the passage of time, it's becoming, and as the gap gets bigger, it was only a difference of, I think, a day this year, but it's up to three days next year. It will be more the next. So it's something that we need to be aware of as we approve calendars moving forward.
Okay. And then experientially, I will just say, we look at calendars every year, and we hear from parents who like to start before Labor Day, and we hear from parents who like to start after Labor Day. And we do our best to think through the kinds of things that Dr. Freeman just spoke about, the impacts that we wouldn't necessarily think about, like the large number of students involved in sports who really get impacted by when we start.
And important to reiterate, this is a receive-only item this meeting, so that at your next meeting, anybody who would like to comment will have the opportunity to do so before you take action later in the December meeting.
Do any of my colleagues have questions before we move on to the next item?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Freeman, can you talk about February break?
I am wondering, I don't remember why we ever went from a week down to two days. Not that I want to go back to a week. But if we're looking at possibly a June 7, last day of school, would there ever be any consideration to adding to the February break? And the reason I'm thinking about that is because I know for so many students, particularly at the high school, who play spring sports, there's no such thing as April break. I think that a lot of kids who are involved in the theater and involved in sports can't really travel. They wind up having a lot of games over April break. So that becomes a week of work, where they just are not in school, but they're here. Would there ever be consideration to adding a day or two, like either Friday the 12th or Wednesday the 17th to February?
We absolutely could do that. So the entire week off in February has fallen out of vogue for some... out of vogue for some time now. There are a few school districts, very few, who still maintain a full week off in February. The initial driver was that there are very few months that don't have a real disruption, and to be able to have February that is only broken up by a long weekend, not by a full week out, followed by March, which also is only broken up by a long weekend, it really gives in the center of the school year an academic time where we are focusing, and it's not inconsequential that that time falls just before the standardized assessment window drops into place. School districts were beginning to see additional holidays added to the calendar. That full week in February, we went through a number of years with really severe winters, and there were a number of school districts, including Guilford, who were sort of really pressured to get 180 days in before July 1, which you're required to do by statute. But when you look at a calendar that has an end date of June 7 or June 10, the community could absolutely consider turning a four-day weekend into a five-day weekend. As an instructional team, we didn't want to bring that suggestion forward to you, but in response to the question, of course, we could do anything that the community wants us to do with the calendar. I'll stop there.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I think I remember that Diwali is now a holiday, a state holiday in Connecticut. I think it was done and made it made a state holiday in August this year. I was just wondering if there had been any consideration of including that in the schedule or how that gets rolled in, or just no?
It's not something that we have looked at specifically. The holidays that we have been carrying in the calendar have been relatively set, probably for more than a decade now that we haven't talked about entertaining or changing. Probably more than a decade ago, there was discussion about how to manage the two Jewish holidays that are both recognized in September, and beyond that, I think the only significant conversation around holidays was how we would label and name Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, but there was never a suggestion that it be removed from the calendar. We haven't looked at adding additional dates. There are some school districts in the state that recognize Eid. South Windsor, I know, recognizes Diwali. It may be the only district in the state that I'm aware of that has added Diwali to the calendar. We have not had requests from the community, and we haven't entertained significant conversation around adding either of those dates to our calendar.
Thank you.
All right. I'm looking at this calendar, trying to make sense of why we're getting out so early. I did find an error.
Is there an error in the calendar?
Oh, there goes my February break.
I'm going to eat that up.
It's December. December notes that there's 22 school days. However, I count 17.
Thank you. So, I am glad
It did seem awfully early.
I'm glad this is a receive-only.
I had to go through and count everything because it didn't sound right to me at all.
Oh, it's weak early.
All right. So, thank you. What we will do is we will come back at your December meeting with a checked and corrected calendar as necessary, but the structure, the logic of the calendar will continue to be everything that we've laid out. It will just get
It's going to push us out more towards the 11th as opposed to the 7th.
Which, right.
Yes. So, no, I
No, no.
This is why they come as receive-only. So, thank you very much.
It was.
I apologize that we brought it to you with an error, but I'm really glad that we brought it and didn't take action in tonight's meeting. You will have a corrected version before the end of this week, and we can publish a corrected version with the minutes. We won't publish the inaccurate version with the minutes. Thank you.
Excellent. All right.
The next two items are just follow-ons.
Right. So, 11.3 is also a receive item. This is the 2026 Board of Ed Meeting Calendar Draft, and identifies all regular budget meetings and workshop meetings as planned for 2026. As we know, regular meetings happening the second Monday of the month typically, workshop meetings happening the fourth Monday, but when there is a holiday on that Monday, they shift to Tuesdays. And then here's our answer. The budget meetings
26, 27.
January 26 and January 27, Monday and Tuesday this year. So, that's a receive item. 11.4 is a receive item for the 2026 Board of Ed Operations Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Policy Committee meeting schedules. And so, these are also for consideration, and we will vote on these next month, but I'll certainly pause if anyone has questions about any of these.
And I'm just going to double-check all the dates in those as well, just to be sure. We'll ensure that you have accurate dates in front of you at your next meeting.
Thank you. And we have started doing this, but I just, for the public who comes to some of our meetings, after several years during COVID and immediately afterwards where we ended up pretty much doing all of our meetings in Guilford High School, we are, we're looking at a schedule for 2026 that has our workshop meetings rotating through all our schools. So, February 23, we're at the high school, but March 23, we're at Baldwin, and April at Lead, and you get the point. So, which is really fun. I really like it.
And important.
And important. I will say, sometimes sitting in chairs for fourth graders for a three-hour meeting makes it hard to get up, but is otherwise, it's really a wonderful opportunity for us to kind of be in these schools and actually at times have the public there that are parents or community members of those schools. All right. We are up to 11.5, which is to act on submission of consolidated grants application. Is there anything we should know in particular? This is a yearly item that we act on. It is a 2025-26 federal program entitlements under Every Student Succeeds Act. There are four titles. Title I, Part A, the purpose of Title I, Part A is the amount, is of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, is to provide all children a significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. Our allocation is $110,431. Under Title II, Part, Title II, Part A, $46,185 is our allocation. The purpose of this title is to increase student achievement consistent with the challenging state academic standards, improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders, increase the number of teachers, principals, and other school leaders who are effective in improving student academic achievement in schools, and provide low-income and minority students greater access to effective teachers, principals, and other school learners. Title III, Part A, the purpose of which is to improve English language acquisition and language enhancement by increasing services and new language instruction and academic content for students with limited English proficiency. The allocation is $6,412. And lastly, Title IV, Part A, to improve student support and academic enrichment, to ensure schools prepare students to graduate from high school ready for college and career success, an allocation of $10,000. So, the total application is $131,343 through our Guilford Public Schools application, and $6,334 through our LEARN consortium, for a total of $137,677. So, this is our application for federal program entitlements. Is there anything important to add to this?
Yeah, I'm going to jump in. I'm going to tell you that those
This is the memo that I submitted.
Oh, that these are not the right numbers, is what you're going to tell me?
So, if I could ask, if I could run through, your explanations were on point. I want to go through, and I would like to correct the dollar amounts as we go through.
Okay.
For Title I, Part A, I want to note that the dollar amount is correct. It is $110,431.
Okay.
For Title II, Part A, also correct. I think it's just the tabulation at the bottom of your page.
Okay.
For Title III, the dollar amount is correct, $6,714.
Right.
Title IV, Part A, $10,000 for a total application of $166,616 through Guilford Public Schools application, and $6,714 through the LEARN consortium, for a total application this year of $173,330. And as you started to note, Dr. Bellistracey, this is an annual exercise that the board is required to do. These are block grants that come from the federal level through the state to us. We are simply required to report out how we will apportion those dollars into each of the items that you noted. And so, the document that you have in front of you notes those apportionments. We simply, I apologize, the total is correct on the digital version. It is incorrect on the hard copy, and so I wanted to correct that number.
No, thank you.
Again, we're simply asking for the board, for your approval of the apportionment. These are block grants. They're based on enrollment and the fiscal situation of the various towns.
Any questions about these at all?
All right. So, we're being asked to act on the submission of the consolidated grants application. Is there a motion to approve that submission?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Abstained. All right. That's everyone. Thank you. All right. 11.7, act on recommendations from the Policy Committee.
Okay. The first one.
No, we skipped 11.6. Oh, I totally skipped.
Tiny item. A little item.
Sorry.
It's out of order in our
It is. I did skip a rather important item. 11.6, to receive for possible action the ratification of the contract between the Guilford Board of Ed and the Guilford Education Association. So, we conducted contract negotiations with the GEA, with our teacher association, and had obviously the administration and then three of us as Board of Ed members representing in that negotiation. We did, that negotiation did take us all to mediation, which simply means that we required some assistance in bringing kind of the teachers' union and the administration Board of Ed together. That is not to say that it was an animus situation in any way, shape, or form, but simply helped to guide both sides to a common number. Three years ago, post-COVID, we experienced an increase across the state of Connecticut in the levels of salary increase in teacher, three-year teacher contracts, which happened for a number of reasons. COVID was certainly one of them, and the extra kind of effort, adaptability, et cetera, required for teachers at that time. Unfortunately, we started to see a teacher shortage following COVID, and so, for those and a number of other reasons, teachers were able to negotiate higher levels of salary increase. We are very pleased to have the level of skill set and professionalism among our teachers. So, I'm speaking to you factually only in communicating that. One of the things when we go into negotiations with our teachers' union is we become aware and are made aware of how contract, teacher contracts are settling across the state and have recently settled. This is important because it not only provides us a sense of what's going on in other districts, but Connecticut is a state in which teachers are not allowed to strike. I'm going to oversimplify this. Teachers are not allowed to strike, but one of the processes in negotiations is that if the Board of Education with the administration and the teachers' union are unable to on their own come to a common final contract, including amounts, it goes to mediation. And if mediation, the process of mediation is unable to bring the both sides together, it comes to, and I always say the wrong word.
Binding arbitration.
Binding, arbitration is the part. I always say a different A-word, which is not helpful.
The binding part is really important. It is binding arbitration.
And decisions, I'm also going to oversimplify this. The decisions and binding arbitration are very much guided by the kind of, the contracted decisions happening across the state. So, we go through or go into these contract negotiations really ahead of time, knowing the range within which we're working. So, I just wanted to explain that process because it is really important to understand that we cannot walk in with a preconceived notion and say, we don't want to go farther than here, because in fact, there will be a range within which we expect to fall and within which we will fall if that process ends us in binding arbitration. All that being said, I'm going to share a little bit of information that we had as we walked into negotiation, and then be clear about what happened and where we landed with our contract together with our teachers. Each of us has a copy of the track-changed contract. So, the current teacher settlements, again, this is across Connecticut, recently has been 13.11% over three years. Average three-year wage increase for contracts negotiated this year, 39 districts, beginning July 1, 2026, to begin, right? July 1, 2026. 1% higher over three years than the average settlements three years ago when teachers were negotiating. And there's been a range of settlements, a high of 16.89%, only three settlements below 12.38%. So, the summary of our substantive agreement in the Guilford teacher settlement, we landed on wage increases over a three-year agreement of 13.14%. This breaks out into three years, 4.35%, 4.46%, and 4.32%. But this does include, and this is really important, a significant part of increase in any year is the step movement that happens for teachers who enter the district now at step four, and then will move up every year. That step increase is part of their contract. So, that's a really important thing to understand, that all of that is reflected.
Another way to phrase that, Dr. Bellistracey,
Thank you.
is that it takes a teacher in Guilford 11 years to make it to their full maximum salary. Essentially, teachers defer that full salary over the course of those first 11 years, and they make one incremental step towards that full salary each year in their initial employment. It's only teachers who have been in the district or in Connecticut, other Connecticut districts for, again, that 11 years who would be receiving the maximum teacher salary.
And it is very common for increases for teacher contracts across the state to be reported and not differentiate that important piece of it, right, which is step movement throughout a year over year. We had some contracted changes in insurance. Contracted deductibles were increased for single and family beneficiaries from 2,000, 4,000 to 22, 50, and 4,500. Had some other small changes in when the administration, when Guilford Public Schools pays out the employer contribution for that deductible. We contracted the appropriate language for FMLA. We are always guided by our wonderful labor attorney who made sure that that language was included. We identified payment of $500 per semester We identified a payment of $500 per semester for teachers assigned to lunchroom duty. Identified sick leave charged in half-day increments. There's timing around dues modifications that are identified in the contract. There is identification of the payment of the last kind of balloon payment before teachers have the summer off and simply timing of that. And then lastly, coaches' stipends, which are part of the contract, to be increased 5% in each year of the agreement, and extracurricular and other stipends to be increased by 3% each year. Again, these are faculty, teachers, staff in our district who do extra activities with students after school and on weekends. So sports, as you can imagine, with athletic coaches, but the various clubs and other ways that teachers really put in extra time to enrich the lives of our students. Anything else I missed from those who were part of the negotiation?
We got it all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So we are being asked to act on the ratification of this contract with all the details that we all have in front of us in the contract. Is there a motion to ratify this contract?
Some move.
Second.
Any other comments, questions, anything? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so we have eight in support and one abstention.
Dr. Bellistracey, if I may, I just wanted to extend my thanks to the teachers who volunteered to serve on their negotiating committee and specifically to you, the board members, who volunteered to serve on this negotiating committee. It involved a number of very late nights and a lot of attention and work, and we very much appreciate that. And I'd also just, I want to add my thanks to the board for approving this budget. I'll say it maybe a little bit more emotionally than you noted. We simply have the best teachers in the state in Guilford Public Schools. And the teaching profession right now in Connecticut but across the nation is facing a shortage. People are leaving the teaching profession mid-career and fewer people are entering the teaching profession. And for us to be able to continue to say that we have the best teachers in the state in Guilford Public Schools, we simply need to remain competitive. We need to hold on to those teachers by offering competitive salaries as well as really supportive working conditions and environments, which we do. But the last two contracts speak to Guilford really thoughtfully, positioning ourselves really competitively. And I appreciate this board for recognizing that and I appreciate this community for supporting that each year as they pass the budgets that are required to support these working conditions and these salaries for those best teachers in the state of Connecticut. So again, thank you very much. I know that we will be referencing this as part of the budget conversation that we've talked about earlier tonight, but I just wanted to name that and extend my thanks to you, the board, to the teachers for their work, and to this community in advance for supporting this contract and these teachers.
Absolutely. And I think, as I said in the beginning, I, this is really a remarkable group of professionals. Many of us have our kids in the school now or have had their kids in the school. I've had the opportunity, I think now, to do four of these.
It's been a lot.
But it's always a really important and meaningful process, especially with the opportunity to have these discussions with some of our teachers who volunteer to be part of the negotiations. And these folks are doing really remarkable things in support of the young people in Guilford and doing a really remarkable job. So happy to be supporting them. All right, I think now we're at 11.7. I think I'm going back in order.
Okay.
Recommendations from the Policy Committee.
Sure, this one we've seen a lot. This is policy number 3724, which is meal charging. Everyone, I think, has had an opportunity to see this a few times now. I'll just highlight the policy and the changes. So the meal charging policy allows students to charge meals in case of an emergency, if they don't have enough funds available on their card. And then the district is allowed to collect unpaid meal debt from those families. So the changes that you'll note, the Board of Education may continue efforts to collect on the unpaid meal debt from families. Funds collected by the Board of Education will reduce the total debt amount and will not be returned to dining services. That's the only real change. We've seen this for a couple of months. Does anyone have additional questions? Okay.
All right, so we're going to ask for a motion to approve revisions to policy 3724, the meal charging policy.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? None. All right.
Okay, the next policy, we are shifting to page 93 in our books. It's a little out of order. So everybody bop down, passed the teacher contract to page 93. Okay.
Policy 5007.
It's after, yeah, it's after the teacher. It's a little out of order.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone have it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is a new policy, policy 5007. If you will recall, last month, we approved 5005, which was related to this. That was a regulation related to this policy. So this new policy defines restorative practices and the responses to those practices. So again, I think everyone has had an opportunity to see this. This is defining what a school environment is, school climate improvement plans, and generally describing a way to enforce restorative practices so that a kid who exhibits challenging behaviors might be able to return to class without necessarily the same kinds of restrictive punishments, punitive assessments that they've had in the past. So this will allow them to come back into classrooms in a more, hopefully, productive way. Any questions on this policy? I know we've talked about this content a lot.
Just to come out, this is the, actually, this came down from the state. This is the state mandate and the same language, I believe, and everything.
Correct. This is an extension of a new expectation around discipline, new expectations around discipline and the discipline environment, and a new policy that was required for us to adopt. These definitions are, they are, they're in addition to that policy. They further explain the policy that we were required to adopt by the state. So yes, this brings us into alignment with the new expectations around disciplinary process and the practice of restorative practices in every Connecticut school district as required by the state.
Any other questions before we vote on this? All right, so is there a motion to adopt the new policy 5007, restorative practices response? Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? None. All right.
Drum roll, please. Okay, this is the one we've all been waiting for. A new policy, 5128. If everyone is looking at it either in your book or the updated draft from 10/27. Okay, new policy, student cell phone and personal technology use. Perhaps I will run through it briefly. It shouldn't take very long. Do you want me to run through the whole thing, kind of in summary?
Or high, yeah, high level, I think, is fine.
Yeah, and I'll just remind the board that this has now been shared with the high school parent community twice and with the district-wide parent community once that the draft has been shared.
Okay, so I'm going to skip definitions and just jump down to the policy, which is now appropriate for all grade levels. So this policy suggests that devices must be powered off and stored out of sight during all instructional and non-instructional times. Devices may be used before and after school hours outside of the building. Students are expected to comply with any staff directive requiring device use. We do have a number of exceptions, students with IEPs, specific or pre-approved educational activities under staff supervision, and a handful of others that we've all talked about quite a bit. Parent and guardian communication. We are going to ask parents and guardians to call the main office if they need to get ahold of their kids. Let's see, what else do we want to highlight in here? Really, the biggest question that I think we as a board need to discuss as it pertains to this policy is off and away all day or any alternative ideas that we have. And just so the public knows, we did, two weeks ago, have a special meeting of the Policy Committee, which we had most of the board in attendance, and we discussed this policy in detail. We had members of the administration there so we could ask questions. We all shared additional feedback that we've received from students, from parents, and we have received tons of emails, which I'm so grateful for. Thank you to the public for voicing your opinion. Many in favor of this policy as written, many asking for kids to have much more access than this policy provides. So I'm sure we all have some questions and some comments on this policy as written. So shall we get into it?
Absolutely. And I, you know, I do want to take this opportunity just to be clear that this is a receive item tonight, so an opportunity for discussion. We have no plans to vote on this tonight. This could come back in the December meeting. I think the current plan is that it would come back, and at that time, we might be expected to make a decision. That is kind of the planned timeline. That's not to say if discussion tonight involves a number of follow-up questions or a number of follow-up considerations that we think might take a little more time, we will have the opportunity to make the decision to consider that. We have, as, there are many aspects or different sections of this policy that briefly describe a number of different aspects of the policy. So as Ms. Peck was saying, we can discuss any and all of those things, ask questions of the administration about thoughts around any of those things. As we've heard, we've heard people in full support, we've heard people who are not in support, and we've heard people asking questions about different aspects of the policy. So I really want to open it to any of my colleagues to start wherever they want to start with items, questions, things they want to support relative to this policy.
Can I just ask a quick one?
Absolutely.
And it's only because when you were giving your summary, it just struck me tonight and I didn't notice it last time. On the line, "Devices may be used before and after school hours outside of the building," for example, on buses, this doesn't contemplate those juniors and seniors at the high school who leave it in their car or go out to their car to use it. So what you're, this policy, the way it's written, says that they can't even do that, that they cannot use it even in their car on school property.
So.
I meant that as a statement, I meant it as a question.
No, no, and I'm happy.
I apologize.
Jen, would you mind just where you're looking at the moment, outside of the building? There we go, thank you.
So that would be accurate, but also students are not generally allowed to run out to, so if a student has a study hall, a student may oftentimes be in the assigned study space. For juniors, it would often, for sophomores and juniors, it's usually the commons. They may ask to leave the study hall space and go to here in the media center. Sometimes students may leave the study hall space to go to some of the soft seating that we have available. They're not allowed to go out and spend the study hall in their car or in the parking lot. Seniors who have open campus are allowed to leave campus. And so, yes, if they were to go to their car, leave for that period, and return later in the day for other classes, then obviously the expectation would be, once they left school property, they would have access to their phone. For seniors, we essentially view the schedule for them with parental approval in very much the same way that college students. They need to be here for their instructional periods. They do not need to stay here for the non-instructional periods. So they could go to their car, leave campus, go get a coffee, use their phone while they're off campus, and return for their next period. That would be accurate. A junior would not be allowed to spend a study hall in their car and then come back in for the next period.
You see where I'm going with this, right?
Absolutely.
And it's reinforcing it. Are we going to have more monitors outside? Like, in all honesty, the kid's going to get to the car and instantly be doing this.
But again, if they're leaving campus, I wouldn't, we wouldn't begin gauging, did they turn the phone on before they pulled off the property or did they turn the phone on after they pulled off the property? I do think there needs to be an adjustment to this. The before-school and outside-the-building portion, I think, needs to remain as written because some students are dropped off early or their buses may unload and there are some minutes before the school day starts. I think the after-school portion is going to need to be changed. We won't be enforcing, students are here for practice or an after-school event.
That's a good point.
Who may be accessing their phone at 3:00 or 4:00 or 10:00 p.m. And so I think that there does need to be before-school and out-of-the-building and after-school hours that students will be allowed to use. We won't be, this is not a policy consideration, but Ms. Jaff and we have been working on ways to ramp up and support supervision, monitoring, and support of the administrators and teachers here, first as this policy is new and then with some continuing long-term. I've got some suggestions and building some plans, but again, that's only to say that we recognize that supervision, monitoring, enforcement will be the greatest challenge when it's new and we will be supporting, we will be supporting. We, again, it is important for us that this policy is an expectation that students will rise to the expectation we set for them. We are not planning spot checks. We are not planning compliance checks. Students will be addressed if it is obvious that they are violating this policy. So if we hear the phone ring in your pocket, if you are seen using it under a table, then an adult will address that concern. But we will not be stopping students in the hallway, asking to see their phone to find out if it comes out of a backpack or if it's in a locker and if it's in an on-or-off condition. We want, to the point that Mr. Scriven made, we want to see the improved climate that we will see from this. We do not expect to be catching our students in violation of this policy. If it's seen that they're violating it, we will respond. We won't be trying to catch students violating the policy. If I may, I also, I know that we leaned into this a little bit in the communication that we sent out. I think like all good policy, this one is going to leave a lot of people unsatisfied in very different directions. I have heard from parents who are unsatisfied because they think this policy goes too far. I have heard from parents who are unsatisfied because they don't think this policy goes far enough. I do want to note, and we're going to continue to message this, it went out in the last communication that went out. I understand that off and away in the backpack can still lead to that brain drain if you know it's in there and if you know that you can turn it on and check it. But this is where we will really be relying on partnership with the community and with the parents. Parents who, we have a lot of parents who come to the back of this building and drop their students off every day. If, when your student gets out of your car, they leave the phone with you, and then if the phone's in the car with you when you return, then that student won't be affected by the brain drain and won't be at any greater disadvantage than any other student who's following the policy appropriately. Any parent who uses parental controls to turn off the phone bell-to-bell, their student will not be affected by the brain drain. And again, their child won't be at any other, any greater disadvantage. So while it doesn't go all the way to fully protecting every child from having it nearby, it gives us a structure in which any individual parent can then take that last final step and ensure that their child, at least their child, is fully unplugged for the school day. And we gave a series of suggestions on how you could do that. And I know that they don't all work for every family, but I'm hoping that for some families who really want this to work for their children, that they can find one of the who really want this to work for their children, that they can find one of those suggestions that does work, like the parental controls, so that it goes off at 7:40 and it goes back on at 2:30, which automatically makes your child in compliance and stops the brain drain, at least for your child. We hope that as the overall environment starts to change, that other students are then going to not work as hard to beat a system when they see that the system is working for others and improving the overall environment of the school. Mr. Scraven, to your comment, right, we're hearing the same thing from other colleagues, that it has improved the overall climate. Speed limit slows down the average speed on the highway, it doesn't stop everybody from speeding. We know that, we talk to a lot of kids, too. We know that students can beat the cupperware box by dropping a burner phone in it. We know that you can buy a magnet to unlock a yonder pouch for $6 on Amazon. Again, we're not looking to catch everybody, we're looking to create the structure, and then with parental partnership, to have it really work for most kids most of the time.
One thing we've heard a little bit, I'm looking at definitions and looking at personal technology devices, as it reads here, includes but is not limited to cell phones, smartwatches, tablets, e-readers, and wireless headphones, earbuds, eyeglasses, and other wearable devices. I know it's been brought to our attention by at least a couple of parents, concern about students bringing personal computers into school instead of using the assigned Chromebook. I'm bringing that up as something for consideration or discussion. Is that something we think is going to be important to include in this policy, or is that something that we wouldn't address, at least in this go-round? And I say "in this go-round" because I think my colleague to my right here, Mr. Delventura, has really, several times, I think, reminded us of an important piece of this, which is, we may not get this right the first time.
Yeah, and we may not have a choice the next time around, because we have half the states in this country that have adopted policies already on this, and Connecticut is behind here. And there's no doubt that we will soon have a policy that we have to abide by.
Right.
It's being signaled at the state level.
Yes, it is.
As we speak.
As we speak. So, you know, I don't know, Dr. Freeman, if you or the administration has thought about personal computer versus requiring Chromebooks, whether that's been a topic of conversation, whether it is purposely not in this list. And then I don't know if any of my colleagues have thoughts.
And how prevalent is it?
And how prevalent, I have no idea.
So it has been a topic of conversation, we have considered it, and we are, we're sort of bundling it in with the smartwatches. I thought you were building up to smartwatches, not to the, not to the personal computers. So there's a number of answers there. One is that the computer is more easily monitored than the phone is, and so it is difficult to have your laptop computer under the desk and be using it. It is very common for teachers to say, "This is not an activity that you need your computers for, so close your Chromebook, close your computer, put it away. This is something that we're doing on whiteboards on the wall, or on paper at your desk, or with manipulatives that you..." So it is easier, it is less up, it's less likely to be, to be used in that way. I will say that while we have greater control over the Chromebooks, and while, because the Chromebooks are ours and we configure them, we have greater control of stopping access to social media, or gaming, or other activities on the Chromebooks. However, even a Chromebook can be used in a classroom to get around some of what we have discussed. I'm not looking to give away secrets here, the students know this, but in a study hall, even if you're across the commons, if you just open up a shared Google document with another student who's on the other side of the study hall, and you're both working in your Chromebook, you could chat through that. But we also allow students to sit together during study hall and talk to each other. So to me, it is a concern, but is a lesser concern than the phones are. And so I think for us, in the first iteration, for those two reasons, we're not really focused on the laptops, whether they be Chromebooks or personally owned, at this level. I do think that if we get our arms around the phones, and we continue to have concerns, that in Level 2, or in the next iteration, we could do even better by thinking through how to respond to those. I'm less willing to talk about the idea of removing laptops from the classrooms, because they do get used instructionally in really appropriate ways. And we heard a really thoughtful commentary about how students can use scheduling applications and calendars, and there's things that students can do with Chromebooks and laptops that are instructionally valid, and you would want them using those devices during a study hall in order to do that. So taking the phone away doesn't necessarily mean that we completely take away their ability to manage their workload using digital tools that a lot of us use in our lives now. I mean, I remember having a Palm Pilot way back when, right? Digital tools have helped us manage our workflow, and students do as well, so I want to be thoughtful about that. There's also concerns around the watches. We're acutely aware of the fact that many watches are tethered to the phone, and so if the phone is really turned off and put away in any of the various ways, then the watch, in most cases, will simply become a device that tells time. If the watch is independent of the phone, we then, again, if we see a student who is swiping and typing on a watch, we would go through the process of saying, "You should not be using your watch in class, please take it off and put it away. If it happens again, asking to take that watch until the class is over. And if it happens chronically, taking that watch and asking a parent to come in and having a conversation, that John keeps using his watch in class and he shouldn't be, so could you please make sure that he's not bringing it to school? Or could you engage the parent controls through your vendor and turn the watch off during school hours so that it only tells time?" I know that's more layered, but we don't want to say that you can't wear any watch to school, and now be, or be trying to say, I don't want teachers to have to be walking the room figuring out which is a smartwatch and which is a traditional watch. And so again, I think this is an incremental step. We will, we'll take a big bite and improve the climate largely through this compromised step that we're taking, and then, as we revise this, we will decide, can we do better with watches? Can we do better with laptops? And how well have we done with phones? I think it's fair to say, if this doesn't work the way that we're expecting it to work, then pouches are going to have to be a consideration. If it doesn't work the way that we expect it to work, we will have to look at different collect, it's a, it's a first step and a middle step, and I hope that people understand that it's being done for thoughtful reasons, just as all of last year. We spent a whole year talking about this, I think for really good reason, and I think for students to be engaged in that conversation. I think we can hear the students are going to disagree with us, but they're feeling heard to a degree in the conversation, and to me, that's enormously important.
It's, as we heard tonight, the research is overwhelming, on two dimensions. The students tend to verify this. There's a social-emotional side, which is more invisible than the intellectual academic side. So the students were quite happy to say, "Yeah, let's, we don't use them in the classroom, that's easy," relatively speaking. But you can see the angst when it all of a sudden really starts to hit their social-emotional, being their identity, and that loss of connection, or the, "I don't want to sit alone without a phone," kind of. So you can already see the insidious damage we culturally have done to our kids, much less ourselves. So the policies need to be understood as really being aimed at both levels of damage that is being done by these devices, and that it's clear that at some point, we have to hopefully explain to our students, that that side of things is every bit, if not more, important. The bullying, the depression, pseudo, you know, all the things that have gone wrong with students with the use of phones and others, bullying, that is really, that's really invisible compared to the research now that says that kids, what's happening in terms of the neuroscience of brain development. We've got so much evidence there, and so I would argue that the more difficult part of this is going to be the character and the social-emotional side of it. All the more reason then that we have to really be clear and strong about it. The experiential literature says that when this is, this changes the culture of the school, and as that changes, it turns out, people end up feeling quite comfortable, in fact, thankful. So we're going to have to live through that learning curve. We have to have some faith that the adults can be adults. The students will rise to this occasion, and it would even be better if we had the entire community of parents that said, "Not only do we want to make sure we do this in the schools, but we want to minimize the use of these devices for all the wrong reasons outside of school." And it's happening more and more with people with grades pre-K, K through 6 or 7. In fact, some places are outlawing them all, countries, Australia, for example, you can't get, now, you can't touch these things till you're 16. Eventually, I predict, within five years, this will be, this will be international. Because the research is becoming so clear, that sometimes, we're going to look back in five years and say, "What took us so long?" So I'm really, I'm really happy we're moving this direction, but we've got an education job to do. And to the degree that we can uniformly explain it, as opposed to, I mean, I love the idea that we're not trying to be, we're not, we're not to catch kids, we're trying to actually catch kids being good.
Correct.
Not catch kids being bad. And at some point, there is a turn in the culture, and the peers take care of it, because kids themselves begin to realize that they don't want to be either disadvantaged, or they begin to realize that, in fact, their lives are changing, and that becomes, and that won't happen for maybe a year or two, but like everything else, this will happen.
I'd like to just add on to what Dick has said, is that we have heard anecdotally from friends and colleagues in other districts that have put in the ban, that the bell-to-bell policy works really effectively, and the social-emotional piece of it, kids begin to see the benefit of not having their phones and taking away that social pressure of being in constant communication with their peers and friends on their phones. And so we're seeing kids lifting their heads up, having conversations. If they're waiting for a classroom, rather than leaning against the wall and going on their phone, they're actually having conversations with someone they may not have known before. And I shared with Katie an article we saw about one of the unexpected consequences of cellphone bans was, more books are being taken out of the library. Because kids want things to do, so they're reading. So we're seeing all of these benefits, and my son now is doing an outdoor experiential learning program where he's without his phone for three weeks at a time, and when I do get to talk to him, he said, "Mom, it's such a relief to not have the phones." And so they are really starting to see the benefits of being without them. And as we've all heard, the students will be resistant to it, but if we begin to create a culture where kids are interacting with one another, I think we'll see tremendous progress.
Well, I want to name the fact that this is the second or third version of the policy to come before the Board of Education. And this board has already revised this policy to be an all-day policy. The initial draft that we brought to you, the board, did have an all-day prohibition from K through 8, but at the high school was built around instructional periods. And so the inclusion of the lunch period, the study halls, the passing time, was because of the feedback of this Board of Education. And so again, I want to acknowledge this process. We have been listening, we have been thoughtful, we know that we're not going to make all constituents happy, but the all-day component of this policy, which also adds a nice little rhyme, right, the off and away all day is the work of this board. And we heard that, we knew that that was, it was constantly coming from the community, this board was hearing it, and that has been a revision to this policy. So while, again, it may not go all the way that some other districts have gone, it gets that important component, it sets those parentheses, I think, where they need to be set if we're going to value the socially-emotional component as highly as the instructional component. And so, again, I just wanted to make sure that I named that for the community, who may not have been following each layer of this conversation, that this board is listening and reading research and making really thoughtful decisions about this policy.
It hurts to hear one of our students, and it hurts me at least, okay, to say that some students are sitting there feeling alone, and they have to devise some way of being alone in ways they don't want to be. And if this becomes a crutch, at some point, given our portraits of graduates and the whole issue of trying to get people to be empathic and so on, students shouldn't be alone. People should know that there's someone over there, and they're sitting by themselves, our own students should be taking care of that, and that's, that's part of what we should be educating for. And to the degree that that becomes part of the larger lesson, as opposed to it just being about this. This only talks about the symptoms. The bigger problem is that kids, kids are growing, and how do we make sure that this isn't in the way, and that what takes its place are the kinds of sensitivities that each, that kids have and teachers have, and so that kids are not alone.
I just, I can just push back on that just a smidge. And nobody likes to be alone, right? But sometimes you want to really be alone, so, you know, I don't want anybody to...
I'm talking about modality, a modality.
Yeah, but even today, like, I eat lunch alone, which I usually don't, and I watch my phone, like, it's just something that's a...
You're not 16.
I understand that, but I just think, to use that as an example, I think it's just, it's, I don't know how often that's happening.
The research is clear, there's a loneliness epidemic in our culture, particularly, particularly with kids, especially teenagers, that is actually an epidemic. Loneliness, and again, it's not very visible, except that you can start to see behavioral dimensions to it. Yes, people, people should value being alone on purpose. That's a different thing than being alone, because I don't know how to connect, when people aren't, don't seem to want to be near me.
And I was just going to add, Dr. Hirsch, and I don't want to, I'm not going to push back on the observation, because I do think that the phones are a contributing factor. I just wanted to remind the board and the community that this policy will not be a panacea.
Right.
High school was hard before we had cellphones, and clicks, and...
Holy name.
Right, and I hate to admit this, but students ate lunch before cellphone alone, and so for some students, it does become a security blanket. We will have to be aware of that, but I just don't want to overpromise. This will, I think this will be positive and will be good for our students, but it won't be a panacea. It simply won't. We will still have other work to do in other areas, as we did before cellphones became a thing.
I want to touch upon, I'm going to pivot a little bit here, because I want to touch upon what we're actually hearing, right? These are all things that we've shared on the board amongst ourselves, and we've talked about for months now. But we're hearing from parents, real concerns about the policy, right? We have certain camps that are in full favor of what we're trying to accomplish here, and then we have certain camps that are very much questioning, rightfully so, important topics, right? Communication with my child, right? So as it stands, right now, if I'm a parent, I could text my parent, I could text my child, I could usually expect to get an answer within hour, an hour or so, right? That will go away.
Correct.
So what are our options as parents and as students to be able to communicate? Because there are sensitive topics that I could tell you, not all students want to go to the front desk to make a phone call to mom and dad. So what are the options?
So the first option would be to try to compartmentalize and hold that communication until after school hours. The next option would be to go through the central office, and that is the most reliable and the most secure way to do that. If you've got a message that needs to get to your student, you can do that through the front office, and we can be very thoughtful and very discreet about how we do that. If you have a child who has a study hall or another time, the students do have the ability, while social media and gaming and other things are blocked on Chromebooks, students do have access to their email, and Guilford High School students have an email address that is assigned to them, and so parents could, if, right, they could contact a child during a study hall. Now, this doesn't work with my adult sons, because they don't open up and check their emails as regularly as they check their texts. But those are all opportunities that you would have. We would continue to say that the best and the most reliable and immediate way is to go through our office. Every school, every classroom in this district has a phone in the classroom, and every office has staff, and we could get a message... has staff, and we could get a message to, again, just as we did before the advent of cell phones. And so that would be the response. But again, I want, and I, we didn't include this in the last communication that went out, but we have heard from students a lot, to a large degree, the communication that happens during the school day isn't just with peers, it is with parents. There is a large degree of communication that is happening during the school day between kids and their parents. And so just as we're asking to give them a bit of respite from the pressure and the anxiety of constant contact to social media, I say this with all the love in the world as a parent myself, we need to give them that respite from us as well, that when I'm in school, I'm in school, and Mom can't remind me about my chores until I'm out of school. And I think that it's all of a set. I think that all becomes really important.
And I do, I'm going to state the very, very obvious, right? This will require some communication changes in families, right? This is going to require that, and it's not going to be easy.
And...
But it, but, but, but I think a number of us on the board feel so very strongly about the negative impact on kids of having cell phones on during the school day, even during non-instructional time, that we are asking and going to be potentially putting in a policy that then requires families to talk to each other about what has to change in those communications, and then how to use other options during the school day when those communications, when something comes up that still has to be dealt with before 2:30 or 3:00 or 3:50.
Exactly right.
One of the other things that we've heard from parents is about disciplinary action, and just kind of what happens in terms of those phases of disciplinary steps. One of them is included of taking the phone away until a parent-teacher conference. That's concerning to a lot of parents, because there are no more home phones anymore, so your only line of communication outside of school are your cell phones. So I'm wondering if we've looked into any alternatives in terms of just what that, what that policy would look like in terms of repeat offenders, in which we're not taking phones away, and they're not going home without a phone, because we have students who need these phones outside of school, undoubtedly for a lot of valid reasons.
And just to add to that, you have some parents who work and cannot get out of work except for off-school times. So, I mean, like immediate meeting might not happen.
This is what we are hearing from parents.
I've heard it too, right? I've had parents contact me with those same concerns. We have thought about this a lot, and I have a response. I don't know if it will be a satisfying response to some, but as I said earlier, we really do not want to create a punitive structure around this. We do not want to be in the situation of giving out detentions and suspensions for a violation of the phone policy. We know that the best consequences for a behavior are immediate and logically connected to the behavior itself. So we do feel that the most logical consequence of violating the phone rule is that first you're reminded, then you're warned, then you lose it only for the class period or the lunch period during which you violated the rule. But ultimately, again, if this is to be successful, we need to include the partnership of the parents and the families at home. And so that last step, which we hope we don't get to very often, is that we are now going to hold the phone, and it needs to stay with us until your parent comes and picks it up. That happens now. When students have misused phones in violation of other rules, a bullying rule, a harassment rule, we have confiscated student communication devices under the curtain, right? And they are held until a parent can come and retrieve that phone. And again, this becomes where I am going to try to over-message the fact that if you have that conversation at home and work with the other ways to reinforce this ban, parents can, if not in every case, in most cases, help their child not to be tempted to skirt this rule by holding it with you after drop-off and before pickup, by using the parental controls and turning it off during school hours, by telling your child that your expectation is that it goes in the locker, not in their backpack, because then it will never be taken away from them if it is in their locker at school. So parents do have agency to a degree, right, in how this is going to impact your individual child. And so I absolutely understand those concerns, I share those concerns, and the reality is that we will end up facing detentions and suspensions while this is new. It won't be for a violation of the phone policy, but some student, this will happen. Some student, for the first time, is going to be told, John, I've asked you three times now, I need to take your phone for the rest of this class. When that student says no, or becomes disrespectful to that adult, then there will be a detention or a suspension, but it will be for insubordination or it will be for disrespect. It won't be for the root violation of the phone policy, but I, we know they're connected, right? When we say that this implementation won't be easy, we know that this is part of what we will, we will be fomenting these conflicts to some degree. It's for a greater good, we understand why we're doing it, but we know, we absolutely want to minimize that happening, and we want a consequence that can be immediate and logically related to the behavior. And we haven't come up with anything other than this response at this time. And again, it's not new. It is a response that we have employed in the past. There will certainly be a greater period of it, we hope, we will not attach a timeframe to it. It won't be, we're holding your phone for five days. It will be until you send, or you come and get it and talk with us. I know that that falls differently in different families, but we haven't found a way to resolve that at this time, in the face of those other competing concerns and values. So again, that's the response. I know it won't be satisfactory for everybody, but I hope it's helpful to know it's at least thoughtful. It's not being done capriciously or arbitrarily, and we didn't just say it's because it's easy, or because it's cheap, or any of those things. The reason for it is because it's immediate and logical, and we don't ever want to get into those other consequences that shouldn't be connected to this expectation in our minds.
I'm a little concerned about the way the policy as written reflects what you've just said. So the policy says, first offense, verbal warning and reminder of the policy. Second offense, device taken from student and held for the remainder of the day. You articulated...
A period.
A period. And then third offense, device held until parent or guardian conference.
So we can build in another level.
Yeah.
We can go, we can go warning, period, day, and then, yes, we can absolutely build in more opportunities.
Yep. And I would almost personally be more comfortable if, where we say third offense, device held until parent guardian conference, I would rather that device held until parent guardian conference fall under chronic offense, so that we have a little bit more thoughtfulness that can go into whether or not we should hold a phone. Like, I feel like then, the administration can be somewhat discretionary if they're saying, okay, Dick, I understand that you've got a job, that you've got to get home to your babysitting siblings, it's not really appropriate for me to keep your phone, I'm giving it back to you, but we've got to get your parents scheduled. Like, I don't know, I just don't like this whole idea, like of taking this away.
This is going to be a tough one. We can look into something like that, but I just heard something as you read it back to me that I either missed or forgot. It says held until conference. It doesn't say until you can drive to school to pick it up. That does allow for the opportunity to do a phone conference or a Zoom conference for parents who can't otherwise get to the school. So it does have some flexibility to...
They can use the same phone.
Yes, to respond to different family needs.
We all just assumed.
Yeah, no, and quite honestly, I was saying it that way. I was saying, until you come pick it up. As you read it back to me, I realized we left ourselves greater latitude than the way that I was presenting. It's new to me, too. I haven't committed all three pages to memory yet.
Yeah. Other, other...
I have a question. We have seen this policy multiple times, and I'm only now seeing e-reader in the list of personal technology devices. I just was hoping you could comment on the rationale for inclusion there, considering that Amy was saying that one of the benefits has been that kids are reading more and checking out more library books. So I just wanted to.
It may be because we caught it in a list of electronic personal devices. I think that if it is a dedicated electronic book, that is probably something that we might want to tease out, so that if students are reading now, again, we're going to get caught with adults having to determine, is that an e-reader or an iPad? And so I would want to consult with building administration about the ability to be that fine. Again, just as we don't want to be going around checking your watch, is it a smart watch or a dumb watch? I, yeah, I think I want to be a little more careful. A paper book is always a paper book, and we're not worried about it. I think we might get caught, and I think we might, we might have kids with tablets that they, that we think are e-readers, and they're using them for other purposes. I'm talking my way through, trying to figure out how it got in there. We will consult with the building administration and look again.
Yeah, I think there's a way to define an electronic book.
But I worry about a classroom or study hall teacher who then ends up, right, so...
I, that's a tough one. It's 2025, I read on a Kindle. I mean, it's, and if we're discouraging that, I think that's something we need to consider.
Yeah, I just, I would like to consult with the building administration about the load of enforcing that. And again, just as we're trying not to put kids in awkward situations, we're also trying to be thoughtful, particularly of that classroom teacher, and not unnecessarily creating a situation that feels like a spot check, or feels like a stop and frisk, and can create a power struggle if we can write a policy that minimizes those opportunities. And again, as I'm hearing myself responding, I'm beginning to think of other reasons that it might have gotten in the list.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Well, I'm new here, but my, one thought I'm having is, as I'm listening to everyone talk through it, and even you, Dr. Freeman, as you're talking through it, this puts a lot on the shoulders of teachers.
It does.
And they already have a lot of things to keep on, at top of mind, so I'm curious, let's assume it's implemented with these revisions that we're discussing, when it's brought to teachers, what is the education for teachers to make sure that across the district, there's like an equity of messaging, and they feel like, understand what the restorative practice is? How am I, all of what we're discussing tonight?
So we're doing work in restorative practices broadly district-wide. The teachers just spent last Tuesday, and they all spent half a day with Dr. Harrison working on restorative practices broadly. This particular policy, and this will be impacted by the timeline. So I have messaged that it is likely that this may be implemented in January. We might determine that it's better for this to roll out in September, because we will need, particularly here at the high school, to have conversations with staff about what consistent enforcement looks like. May teachers who are already choosing to use calculator caddies and Rubbermaid boxes, may a teacher continue to use those if the now policy is off and away? We worry about what that means for this, how do we keep track of the students whose parents did hold on to the phone when it's time to drop it into the Tupperware box? How does it account for this? So there are some of those rollout details that, again, don't need to be codified in a policy, but we will need to work, we will need to talk to staff, and we will need to work with staff to answer some of those questions, particularly here at the high school. And Ms. Chaff, who is really disappointed that she was unable to be here tonight, is particularly aware of that. So that may impact our timeline. If the board acts on this on December, you know, you can see that we're doing things that we've never done before. Never before have we sent out a policy before the board had adopted it, and it's because we want to make sure that we're messaging and bringing in that parent community. But we need to talk to our staff about what that classroom enforcement looks like, what it looks like as you go through a series of progressive responses, when do you call the office, when do you respond in your class, and, I just lost my train of thought, and the modeling. We need to talk with the adults in the building about what it means for all of us. If students are expected that their phones are off and away during the school day, then our teachers need to recognize that their phones need to be off and away while they are with students. And again, it's changes for everybody, and the kids told us change is hard. So we need to do a lot of talking, we need to empower the teachers to be part of making some of the decisions, but teachers make those decisions within, in alignment with board policy. And so we really want to, there's a couple moving targets, and we're watching both of the, we're watching all of them as they unfold here. It'll be a lot. And it'll likely be faculty meetings and conversations at the high school that involve one or multiple of the three of us, as well as the team at the high school, because this is a district's policy, it's not just a high school change that's happening. I apologize for my really long answer.
No, 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 this is important discussion. I wanted to summarize where we are, and then make a proposal, because we are nearing 10 o'clock at night. I am hearing comments, questions, and some follow-up around the definition, which might include things like e-readers. I'm hearing an update that the administration would like to make under the policy section around defining use after school, right? As different activities are happening in school. I'm hearing questions and concerns about the progressive discipline and restorative practices section, and hearing there will be some updates to that. And I'm hearing some good questions about teacher, support of teachers. Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, at your next meeting in December, we can come back to you with the changes that we suggested here, which doesn't mean we need to go back to a first read, right? So we can make those changes that we've discussed here, and we can try to come with a more sketched-out implementation plan for the high school, for the teachers and the parent community. We've already started the parent communication, but we, we've also started the adult communication. You heard from kids already that some teachers have already ramped up their own restrictive practices in their classrooms because of the research and because of what they've been reading, and because of what's happening in other schools. We'll have that sketched out in greater detail as well. I'm talking at a really high level. We'll have a more detailed response to that question at our next meeting as well.
Well, and I don't want to stop conversation if there's anything pressing left. Go ahead.
I just don't want us to gum this up with details when I think progressive action is sooner rather than later is probably a good idea. I had an old professor, law professor, who said, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I, you know, that's my only, I would rather see something put into action sooner rather than, you know, because we could litigate every detail of this, but...
We ain't never going to get this perfect. But we can get it pretty good.
But I just want to piggyback on that, because I always do, right? You know, my big concern and what I've really, has been gnawing at me through all of this, is that it's not going to be the kids that come and speak here at night. It's not going to be those kids that are going to be the problem. It's going to be your marginalized kids that are already struggling to get through a day anyway. And, you know, who knows what the situation is at home, or what's contributing to that. I just feel like those are the kids that are going to get stuck up in this. Kids that are already hurting and struggling, and so without more of a progressive or a more restorative practice, I just see more of bigger problems. Those are the kids that are going to be insubordinate, those are the kids that are going to keep getting these detentions. So you could say it's not the cellphone that's doing it to them, but maybe there's something in their makeup that, it really is the cellphone that you're punishing them for. So this is why I get worried when we start talking about things like that. And so I was glad to hear that there's a desire to maybe do something more incremental, because those are the kids I worry about.
Yeah, and I want to be really clear. While we will not give suspensions or detentions for violations of the phone policy, we absolutely understand that enforcing the phone policy will trigger some students and will foment another behavior. We know that, we recognize that. It will escalate for some kids, and then we will have to respond. But again, we know that going in, and we believe that it is going to be for a greater good. We believe that it's going to get them, all kids, to an improved climate and environment and better place. It will be easier for some kids in Guilford than it is for others. We, I totally recognize that, and I wish that I could change it, but I don't believe that that's something that we'll be able to change. We will remain thoughtful and considerate and compassionate about that as we go through it with students.
And your other issues... And your other issues going to be, you know, we've all seen the emails, they're 50/50, right, of parents that are in favor of this policy and not in favor of this policy.
Fifty and for different reasons, right? We kind of live with all that, yeah.
Absolutely. I think it's going to be, I think this year's going to be hard. I think you might want to consider doing a more slow incremental process, because you are going to need that parent buy-in, because otherwise the kids are going to go home and the parents will be like, "Oh, what's this stupid policy about?", and encourage their kid to be maybe a little bit more non-respectful and positive. These are just things that I know you guys are thinking about, I just want to say it out loud, that it's, the research is there, and I've told you guys, I agree with all the research. I don't doubt that or anyway, and I'm totally buying in to all of that. I know that that's true. It's a practical, it's a practical thing.
We are open to discussing the timeline, and again, we felt that if there was any chance of a January 1, we owed it to our parents to begin getting that conversation out. I think you're right. I think that there are going to be parents who are opposed to this. Some are opposed to it because we've now included lunch periods, they would have supported it if it was instructional only, but they are opposed to it because we included lunch. Others will be opposed to it because, yeah, you got lunch, but you didn't include a pouch or a restriction of some kind, and they will be opposed to it for that reason. I think most good policy leaves a lot of people unsatisfied for different reasons.
The last thing I'll say is, we have families in K through 8 who are used to a bell-to-bell policy. And so, it is literally going to be a four-year process in which we are through and done. We are now at a point where every family in Guilford Public Schools is immune to a bell-to-bell system in just four years.
So, I am going to encourage, obviously, all of us to continue thinking, et cetera, be prepared for the December 8 meeting. If, in the next week or two, there are any part of the policy that you have a question about or concern about and think would need an administrative response, so please reach out to Kristin or I, are you comfortable with this? Because we can then note that, because we're obviously not going to be able to sit in a December 8 meeting and bring something up that requires Dr. Freeman or any of the administration to discuss further and vote on that policy, right? And that may happen.
Which is okay.
And that may happen, but if, you know, before, let's say, November 20th, I'm going to throw a date out, before November 20th, of course, anytime, but particularly before November 20th, if something comes up, you're like, "Ooh, I'd really like to see what the administration's thinking about this, that, or the other thing part of the policy." Please reach out to us, we will communicate that to Paul so that the administration has some time to think about that. All right, I am going to get us, I want to thank everyone, first of all, for their time and topic questions. Reports of committees, policy committees, do you have anything else? Nothing else? Could you say that faster? Operations committee?
No major updates.
No major updates. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee?
We met a couple of weeks ago, in part on this issue, but it was reported to us by Dr. Goss about the new universal screening test for math and reading, first time given. Our students took it, and we had a 92% of our students reaching competency.
Target.
Target.
Excellent. Liaison to town committees, anything to report? And no update for liaison learned board of directors. We are at our second public comment. This can be a public comment for items not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to address the board, we ask them to come up, state their name and address, and ask them to stay within three minutes, please.
Hello again, Brittany Stalsberg, 170 Chestnut Grove. And I'll be quick, I know it's late. I am the mother of three children in Guilford Public Schools. I'm also the PTO grade rep for first grade at A.W. Cox. We know you are all volunteers, and we are grateful for your service to our school and our community. To respect your time and avoid having dozens of parents tell you the same thing, a couple of us are here to represent the 27 families that have signed on to a letter outlining our requests related to the large class sizes at Cox this year. I preface these requests by making clear that the first-grade teachers and the principal at Cox are phenomenal and doing all they can to make these classes work. These requests are meant to support their excellence. One, we would like to see the hiring of a para to support the classrooms. We understand that paras are not replacements for teachers, but we see immense value in having another adult in the room to help manage the behaviors that are preventing children from fully focusing on learning. Extra staff could go a long way in stabilizing the classroom environment and allowing the teachers to teach and provide the individualized attention that first graders need. Secondly, we urge you to return to three sections for second grade next year. We understand that 22 is within the range of BOE policy, but that brings me to our last request, which is to encourage you to reconsider the class size ranges that are currently BOE policy. The policy was adopted in 1999, 26 years ago, when classroom environments were very different than they are today. 22 students is higher than the state of Connecticut elementary average and needs to be changed to ensure future Guilford families can learn and thrive in appropriate classroom sizes. We understand that you and the administration are up against a lot in preserving small class sizes and that you have to present the town with a budget that the majority of voters will tolerate. We, the Cox families, are committed to supporting you and rallying our own networks to ensure the education budget reflects the needs of our students and families. Thank you again for your attention, your service, and your dedication to our community. And I also have a copy of the letter that I can pass out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Nijm, 19 Old Torrey Road. Here also, as a parent of a first grader at A.W. Cox, I want to start just by expressing appreciation for the wonderful leadership that Dr. Freeman and the Board of Education provide for the district. As you've heard, we made a letter available to Dr. Freeman and now to members of the Board of Education about the first-grade class sizes. We deeply appreciate Dr. Freeman's response to us and providing context. Also deeply grateful to Vice Chair Peck for raising this issue in tonight's meeting as well, and her responsiveness. And so, tonight, I just wanted to highlight some of the concrete ways in which the large class sizes are affecting some of the children's educational experiences, rather than having all of the parents here to speak. I, again, want to make clear that the teachers are doing an absolutely wonderful job leading these large classrooms. They're doing the best that they can, and we're grateful to them. Still, several first-grade parents have expressed concern that their children's ability to learn is being compromised. There have been reports of parents feeling their children are distracted by behavioral issues that they see in the classroom. The teachers, of course, have to deal with urgent behavioral challenges in ways that may take away from instructional time. As one parent explained, their child tells them, quote, "They have to stop doing their activities because someone is getting in trouble or going into the principal's office." Another parent worried that her child is, quote, "struggling to keep up," in part because she's distracted by the behavior of other children in the classroom. With large class sizes, teachers also have limited capacity to provide more individualized attention to students. As a consequence, some parents, for example, are legitimately concerned about their children's progress in reading. As one parent explained, "I'm working with my child at home, but he needs more one-on-one attention at school, and he's not getting it." Another parent observed a regression as her child's starting her writing her name backwards. As this parent put it, "I don't think that the teacher has time to give her the attention she needs." Parents know that the teachers are doing the very best they can under challenging circumstances. As one parent explained, "I wanted to email the teacher and ask her about some of my concerns, but I know she's got to be so overwhelmed, and I don't want to make things harder." We know that classroom support and smaller class sizes would lead to fewer issues in the classroom and more individualized instruction, and we know that you'll prioritize children's learning as you approach this issue and the budget, and we want to express our appreciation for your attention to this issue as you plan for next year. Thank you.
Are you wanting your name?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Lillian Corbier. I'm a student at Guilford High School, a freshman, class of 2029. I came up here today to discuss the start times of the high school. Students sleep has been something that many people have come up here to talk about, many people have probably brought to your concern. There have also been many statistics that I'm sure you all have seen many times, and I'm sure that you all have researched many times. However, I would like to bring up the mental health impact that it brings to students. The dip in mental health that many students experience due to lack of sleep, due to the amount of sleep that a teenager needs to be able to function throughout the day, to be able to learn and absorb the things that we hear in class. I've heard many students say that they can't focus for the first two periods because of how little sleep that they are getting, because of how early that they have to wake up to be able to catch the bus or to be able to get to school on time. Starting at 7:40, 7:30, most of us get here at 7:10. It doesn't work for the teenage body, and it doesn't work for the learning process. It doesn't learn, it doesn't allow us to learn as well as we should be able to. For example, my first period is Spanish. It's not helping my language acquisition to wake up at 5:30. It's not helping my language acquisition that I have to study until 10 o'clock for a quiz and then wake up five hours later when I can fall asleep. For example, when we researched this, when I was in maybe even sixth grade, we interviewed high schoolers, every single one of them had said that they had fallen in sleep in class at least once throughout that year. They also mentioned that when they had a free period, mainly the seniors, when they could come in later, when they could sleep in later, they had a much better time learning. They had a much better time absorbing what they were hearing, what they were being taught. So, I'm here once again to bring this back to your attention, that we do need sleep. It's, to quote an article that I read some time ago, asking a teenager to wake up and be here at 6 or 7 o'clock.
All set? Okay, so feel free to finish up here.
Yeah. To quote an article that we had read many years ago, asking a teenager to wake up at 6:00 a.m. and be completely ready to learn, completely ready to really take in what we're trying to learn, is alike to asking an adult to be up and working at 3:00 a.m. Teenagers need much more sleep than, per se, a teacher or an adult, or even young children, because they're developing more. So, I ask to bring this back to your attention because of how much I see it affecting my peers, my friends, and myself, especially with also the amount of homework that I know that the upperclassmen are getting. So, this is more to bring it back to your attention, that this is an issue and it does need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Hi, I'm Isabel de Costa. I'm a freshman at Guilford Public Schools. I'm just going to bring up the points that I feel like Lilly, like, didn't mention. All her points were very valid, but there were some other points that I feel like we should mention. A lot of students, prior to going to bed, have a lot of things to accomplish, like homework, school, sports, theater, a bunch of other things that might not even be related to school. And to get that all done, they can't really go to bed at a really early time to be able to get more sleep. They would need to wake up later in order to get that sleep. And I've heard a lot of people talking about planning for future years, a lot of my peers in freshman year, planning to have study hall periods as early as possible or as late as possible to get extra sleep in those periods, or at least extra rest times, because they feel they aren't getting enough sleep in the mornings. And in the beginning of the day, when we are all gathered here early, like, 20 minutes before school even starts, we're all gathered in the cafeteria, at least most of us are, and a lot of me and my friends, we all sit down, and not much of us talk. We're not even like, it's not even a phone thing, or we just don't want to talk, it's just that most of us are still resting. Like, I know one of my friends, like, she doesn't talk to anybody, she just sleeps, and then we all wake her up, like, five minutes before the bell rings, because she needs to get to class. So, she spends that time sleeping instead of talking and socializing, because she doesn't get enough sleep in the morning prior. And, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both, good job.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the board tonight?
Polly Reader, 280 Sage Hollow Road. Hard X to follow here. Certainly. So, as we heard, I mean, these two young women speak so alchemically, you can definitely multiply their experience by dozens upon dozens, by hundreds, we know that well. To hear from more students, our board chair, you know, talked about the dozens of letters that the Baldwin students wrote last year, which were made available at the district office for board members to read. And those letter writers, they're still at least a couple years from the daily unnecessary struggle of this chronic sleep deprivation, which, again, is a choice of the district, and we are inflicting this upon over 1,000 kids. I mean, because it's really actually an issue in Adams, too, for the timing. So, now at this point, more parents, you know, of the freshman parents have become aware that they've been misled about the start time of school, that the kids all are coming in and they're already here by 7:10, 7:15, when school doesn't start until 7:40. And I think that if we asked the minority, you know, it was looked at back in 2017, was when this was all examined, quite a long time ago, and if we asked the minority of elementary parents from back then, whose concerns were enough to cow the ward back then, to not make the right choice, quite honestly, and we had a pretty, you know, just a small recommendation put forward, although it was a ton of work, I think those parents would feel quite differently now with their high school kids. And as, you know, I've been talking with people about the high school cell phone policy, you know, I don't even have to raise it, other parents are saying, "Yeah, you guys are doing this, that's great that you're doing this." But why aren't they fixing the real problem? Why aren't they fixing the start time? I mean, it's so clear, there's so much science, why aren't they doing that? So, it's, and here's the thing, is the science is just getting worse, if that's even possible. There was a study that just came out in October, results from over 8,500 teens, it's all pre-pandemic data, birth cohort study. Poor sleep at age 14 predicted suicide attempts at age 17, even after accounting for socioeconomic and mental health risk factors. So, specifically, it was less sleep on school days that was measured, that more strongly predicted suicide attempts, and when the kid, that happened with kids at age 14, suicide attempts at age 17, same cohort of kids. And it was, and it was more strongly predicted than even the established suicide factors that we know. Depressive symptoms, self-harm, socioeconomic status. So, I just, you know, the lead pipe analogy, it just all, I don't know what more we can say, or what we're waiting for.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Polly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Polly.
Yeah, I mean, again...
Polly, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. We gave everyone else only three minutes, so, and there are people behind you who'd like to speak.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Petrovsky again, since we're talking about school days. Remember when I went into my eighth-grade class, they had textbooks those days, and I picked up a textbook, and I flipped through it, and the first chapter of the book was "Science." first chapter of the book was science, living things, plants and animals. For 53 years I've been growing plants. And there's a very, very close similarity between the two, believe it or not. We're hearing of all these issues with the kids. They are having it. It's nationwide. It's not just Guilford. And there's a common denominator, I believe. And there's two things, actually. We talk cell phones. Cell phones are supposed, they're supposed to have an effect, effect on the body's ability to produce melatonin. It interferes with the natural production. That interferes with the sleep pattern, number one. Number two, and I'm just curious, we have all these studies. Has anyone ever done a study with regards to the vitamin D in their bodies? Is there any deficiencies? That has an impact on just about everything. Learning disabilities, sleeplessness, anxiety and everything else. Usually going through puberty and into adolescence, the vitamin goes way to the empty mark. Vitamin D is good for bone, you know, strong bones and, when the kids are going through adolescence, their bones are growing. Their intake doesn't cover, you know, the load. I think somebody better look into the vitamin D to start with. And the thing is, the best source of vitamin D is sunlight and science has proven, let's stay out of sunlight to avoid skin cancer. So we're damned if we do and damned if they don't. But just look into something like that. See if there was a study. Thanks. Like I say, I agree with these people. There are issues and, you know, what are you gonna do? Thanks. Now, for any, I mean, one of your missions for the Board of Education is to take the little kids and grow them into bigger little kids to go out in the world. And it's not easy out there either. So, I mean, good luck with your mission. It's getting tougher and tougher. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. For those of us who are watching on live stream, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Hi. Good night. Thank you.